Welcome to the 6:30 January 12, 2021 Titusville City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Then for individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions and requests, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting, and all comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. And finally, citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items identified.
Thank you, City Clerk. May we move to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, move if we approve.
No minutes.
We don't have any minutes.
Correct.
We're just checking there.
Are you testing me? I failed.
Did we pass? Just on a curious note, when we don't have minutes, and I realize there's people watching the special, okay, when we don't have minutes, that simply means they're out there, they're just not ready?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. We know recognitions?
We have none, sir.
Okay, we move to petitions and requests from the public. Anyone wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Name and address for the record.
My name is Laurlee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue in Mims, and I'm sorry that I couldn't make it to the meeting, the previous meeting. I had a Brevard Nature Alliance Board meeting, and it was a Zoom meeting, and I was running back and forth from my computer to the TV, but I couldn't turn the sound up on the TV, but the pictures looked great. And the work that staff did was amazing. And so, but I did want to make a comment. So, I speak to you tonight not as a gray-haired old lady, but as a child who roamed the wild and free area of the place that's now known as Sandpoint Park. That child was filled with hope for the future and what it would hold during a time when most of the other kids' fathers worked in secrecy on the other side of the river building rockets that would send men to the moon. Sandpoint Park was filled with old trailers where carneys and snowbirds flocked for the winter. Baseball fields occupied the territory where no trailers rested, and old-time tent revivals and traveling circuses regaled our residents, where Harbor Point condos now stand tall. Our city's fishing pier was a wooden remnant of the very first bridge across the Indian River, whose waters were gin-clear and filled with life. I knew that my little world around the causeway was special, but I had no idea how significant it would become. The trailers and their inhabitants are gone now, so are the ballfields, and so is my old home. The wooden pier has been replaced with a new cement pier and the swing bridge by a beautiful high-rise bridge with the best views of all. We see the Indian River's widest portion and the only undeveloped shorelines that remain. The Titusville Causeway is no longer just our causeway. It belongs to the world, as our causeway is the gateway to national and global treasures that include the third-most-visited wildlife refuge in the nation, home to more threatened and endangered species than any other wildlife refuge on the continent, one of only 10 national seashores and the world's only public spaceport. Our community is the eastern end of the 250-mile-long Florida Coast-to-Cost Bike Trail. Our causeway is the most significant spot in the entire state for nesting horseshoe crabs and the birds that consume their eggs for survival. Due to its unusual northeast-southwest alignment, our causeway is the best place for wind sports on the entire east coast of Florida. Our causeway is the window to the river for people who can't afford to buy a boat or a house along its shores. Sandpoint Park is the gateway to our causeway. The Indian River is gasping for life, and we are the problem. Along its 156 miles, Titusville is the municipality that is furthest away from any inlet. I need two more minutes.
Since you're saying all those good things... Um, bottom of the paper? Go.
We have no hope of getting clean water from the sea. 37 miles and the largest barrier island on Florida's east coast separate us from ponds inlet to the north. A one-mile canal that's comparable to a skinny straw allows some movement of water during high-wind events. 65 miles and six causeways separate Titusville from Sebastian Inlet to the south. Our community was the last one in Brevard County to stop dumping sewage into the river. The legacy load that we've put into the river will stay there forever, and we've just added insult to injury. We've turned the ponds of Sandpoint Park into sewer ponds. The fish are dead, the birds are gone. So what are we going to do about it? We can do as little as possible and run aerators in the water until it reaches a point where it's safe for humans to be around, leaving sterile ponds devoid of wildlife. It will take years to restore our fish populations. Or we can show true leadership and do the job that these ponds deserve. Keep pumping the ponds until they're dry enough to get the muck out of them and start over. Surround them with well points if you have to in order to get them dry, but keep moving the bad water out. This is the time of year to do that. It's not going to rain much. Plant cypress trees around the edges of the east pond and oak trees further back. Trees are attractive year-round. They'll draw tons of birds, they'll provide shade, and they'll absorb thousands of gallons of stormwater rather than letting it go into the river. With every rocket launch, the eyes of the world are on Sandpoint Park and our causeway. Let's show the world how special our community really is by taking on the responsibility of improving the condition of these stormwater ponds and reducing the amount of nutrients they convey into the river. Show some hope for the future. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. As always, well done. Name and address, please.
Tony Shifflow, 715 Tropic Street.
Don't go the wrong house.
One of the locally designated historic structures. I'm also a member of Titusville's Historic Preservation Board and a member of the Titusville Tree Team, but and a member of the University of Florida Counting Spawning Horseshoe Crab Team, but I'm not here tonight to stand up about any of those things. I want to talk about the other end of the bridge, Parish Park over there on the causeway that Laurlee was just speaking about. And my only thing is that I have seen the plans that Brevard Parks and Rec have presented for improvements of this stretch of the causeway, the beach. And I went to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and listened to the presentation there and the questions that those learned people raised, and they were so much more eloquent than I am, and my only purpose of standing up here tonight is to ask you all to be ready for it to come to council, and don't let them ruin the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Go. Got it, then. If that's the same handout.
Name and address for the record. Ready?
Yes, sir. You've done this before.
Stan Johnston, 860.7 Avenue. I'm a professional engineer, and I am a watchdog for fight for zero. And that's a big deal. So I'm here to, because I would have responded earlier. It just recently somebody asked me the question, "Well, what would you have done, Stan, if somebody contacted you with some emails and phone calls and so forth to the city like you've done? Like, you seem like you're pesting them. What would you have done?" And then I thought, "My goodness, that's something I hadn't thought about," which is crazy, because what I would have done, I would have complained. I would have written this to you long ago. And here's what I wrote. It says, this has to do with Mr. Stoffer. It says, "I am now," this is what I just sent to you today, "I am now directing you, in my capacity as a professional engineer licensed by the state of Florida, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public, you are directed to close off park areas to the public that are hazardous to the health, safety, and welfare of the public ASAP. Or, you got a second choice. Provide me a written notification signed and sealed by a competent PE that these areas are safe to the public." I'll tell you why you don't respond. Because you are in a lose-lose situation. Mr. Stoffer won't sign that. He won't sign it. You can't get, there must be 3,000 professional engineers in the state of Florida, and none of them will give me a written notification that it's safe. So what I'm saying is, close it off. Those, I'm not saying the whole park, but only those areas that are unsafe as indicated by, you can indicate it by your testing. You've already said it, it's unsafe. The reports say it's unsafe. What in the world will be allowed people there? Okay, what happened a few years ago is I had a friend who had his 16-year-old daughter going to a football game, and by golly, she had asthma and she died. So I can get sprayed by that sewage, it doesn't bother me. I've been tested for, I mean, so, but the thing is, is that what you're going to be doing is, if you get somebody hurt out there, what's going to be happening, you know, the parents may be very disappointed, and they're going to be saying is they're dead. They're dead or disabled because you tricked them. They thought it was clean air out there, but, so, they're dead, or they're disabled, because you tricked, you tricked them. They're dead, or dead, or disabled, because you tricked them. I'd like to have another minute.
We're ready to move on. Thank you.
Remember.
Thank you. City Manager, would you, excuse me, is there anybody else wants petitions requests?
And Clerk, did we have any emails on petitions or requests?
Sir, thank you for asking. Stan, Mr. Stan Johnston had sent an email indicated for the 5:30 and the 6:30 meetings. I believe the email that I saw was indicated for the 5:30, items on the 5:30.
It says both meetings.
Yes, sir, I did see that. So thank you for asking, and that was emailed and distributed to council.
Right. Stan, I got those emails, your handout wasn't the email, right? Okay.
That's only part of it. It has, this, leave your mind, today is 11, yesterday's 11.
We got them. Thank you. All right. City Manager, can you move us into consent?
Yes, sir, on to consent. Counsel, are there any items on the consent agenda items between A through Q that any council member would like to pull? City Clerk, are there any cards for any of the consent agenda items, A through Q?
Yes, sir. One individual has submitted cards, and that's for six items.
Mayor and council, with your permission, I'd like to read for the record the consent agenda items.
Yes.
Consent Agenda Item A. Approve Resolution 2-2021 rescinding Resolution 39-2020 and adopting 2020 Brevard prepares local mitigation strategy plan. Consent Agenda Item B. Approve Resolution Number 3-2021 Right-Away Vacation Application 4-2020 declaring that the public hearing will be held on February 9, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. in city council chambers located at 555 South Washington Avenue to consider vacating and abandoning and discontinuing certain public streets located at property with Brevard County Partial ID Number 2237, or correction, 3517AV25. Consent Agenda Item 8C. Approve Advisability to Consider Amending the Community Development Fee Resolutions Regarding Additional Engineering Review and Other Studies That May Be Required. Consent Agenda Item 8D. Approve the Award to SDV Services Incorporated in the Amount of $219,150 to provide ditch clearing and grading at the stormwater ditch located on Carroll Avenue and Lane Avenue and additionally authorize the mayor to execute the work order. Consent Agenda Item 8E. Approve the Police Department K-9 Donation Private Sources Fund Transfer Request in the Amount of $19,500 and approve the purchase of three new K-9s. Consent Agenda Item 8F. Approve and appropriate the use of $10,000 of forfeiture funds to repair and maintenance of forfeiture vehicles. Approve and appropriate the use of $4,000 in forfeiture funds to purchase crime prevention materials and promote various services of the police department supports. Approve and appropriate the use of $15,000 in forfeiture funds to purchase a new sign to replace an existing non-functioning sign outside the police department. Approve and appropriate $10,400 in forfeiture funds to purchase a mobile identification systems. Also approve the attached budget amendments for the proposal of, from Data Works Plus for the mobile identification system. Consent Agenda Item 8G. Approve Change Order 1 in the Amount of $25,000 with KAG Specialty Products Group for additional Lyme salarary removal services and authorize the city manager to execute the change order. Consent Agenda Item 8H. Approve the Use of the Florida Sheriff Association Cooperative Purchasing Program to Purchase a 12-yard Dump Truck from Nextron Truck Center of Orlando, Florida in the Amount of $154,180.6. Consent Agenda Item 8I. Approve the Purchase of 60 Sets of Bunker Gear from Bennett Fire Products for a Total of $138,655.20, Piggybacking on the Lake County, Florida Contract 170606, and authorize staff to initiate the necessary instruments to purchase, to secure and purchase. Consent Agenda Item 8J. Approve the Award of Work Order to Environmental Consulting and Technologies Incorporated in the Amount of $115,261.40 to provide vegetation harvesting services at Dre Field Park Pond. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendment and authorize the mayor to execute the work order. Consent Agenda Item 8K. Approve Change Order Number 1 in the Amount of $59,685.26 with SDV Services Incorporated to Include Additional Services and authorize the mayor to execute the change order. Consent Agenda Item 8L. Approve a Contract with MKI Services Incorporated of Coral Springs, Florida in the Amount of $49,532.3 for repair of the Offspray Reclamation Facility Dissolved Air Floation Thickener and authorize the city manager to execute the contract upon review and approval of the city attorney and purchasing department. Consent Agenda Item 8M. Approve the Purchase of the Automated Carts in the Amount of $43,354.8 from Auto Environmental Systems of North America of Charlotte, North Carolina. Utilizing the pricing from HGAC-BY Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, additionally approve the associated budget amendment. Consent Agenda Item 8N. Approve the Award of the FY21 Annual Road Resurfacing Project to Massey General Contractor Incorporated of Port Orange, Florida in the Amount of $815,416.78 for the Construction of Paving Improvements at Various Locations Within the City of Titusville and authorize the mayor to execute the said contract upon review of the city attorney and staff. Consent Agenda Item 8O. Approve the Award to Wright Pierce Incorporated of Orlando, Florida in the Amount of $287,100.100 to provide engineering consultant services, including but not limited to the preparation and design drawings and specifications, permitting, bidding, and assistance in the construction administration services for new master pump station improvements and authorize the mayor to execute the work order and the budget transfer of additional funding to the project account. Consent Agenda Item 8P. Approve the Funding for an Upgrade of the Wi-Fi Equipment Located at the Titusville Marina in the Amount of $52,000 and award the Contract to Cannaveral Construction Company of Mims, Florida. Consent Agenda Item 8Q. Approve the Completion of the Lease Acquisition Approved Stormwater VAC Truck with Six Years, up to 2026, the Final Payment in the Amount of $84,000, and the Repurchase Agreement from, with Environmental Products Group Incorporated additionally authorize the mayor to execute the contracts.
Thank you, City Manager. That was quite a read. With that, call the cards, please.
Yes, sir. Again, it's one individual. As he's coming up, there's six cards on A, D, like Delta, J, K, N, and O. Stan Johnston.
I had them wrong, had them wrong the first time. Can you read that again?
Absolutely. A, D, Delta, J, K, N, and O. Mr. Johnston?
Stan Johnston, professional engineer, watchdog for fight for zero, and 860.7 Avenue. I've got six items and only 10 minutes. Golly, if I had three minutes per item, I'd have 18 minutes. So let me see what I can do. I'm trying to combine them in some way. So I'm combining three items under dishonesty like this, you know, fraud, that's by, you know, by all these council members except for Joe. Joe hasn't got into that yet. But we've got this fraud, you know, that has really bad, and hopefully you'll sue me someday so we can go to court. But this also involves Mr. Stoffer, and actually, Mr. Broome and City Manager. So anyhow, there's, I got three items that has to do with that type of stuff. So let me start in with those three particular items. And the first one is, is, it's the wrong number.
A?
Is 8A. Yes, it is, 8A. Let me tell you what the second one is. The second one is, my goodness, it looks like it's 8D. And the third one is, is 8O. So I'm going to try to talk about those three items together to try to expedite things, because those are the ones that, but the first one, first one, 8A, is I said, I wrote in there against, but I don't want to say that. I want to say against or table, because this involves a serious amount of dishonesty that I'm going through with Joe DiNero and two of city employees. That's Brad Parish and Edie Galindo, Eddie, Eddie Galindo, because this has to do with the resiliency and sustainability in the city of Titusville, and you guys too, because it has to do with what I filed in Circuit Court. Clerk of the Courts, Brevard County Public Records, I filed an affidavits, including Mr. Jordan, who's one of those, affidavit of gross negligence. And it goes on and on about, and it has to do with what Mr. Stoffer and some other people have to do with this, because it has to do with what I'm an expert at, and you have a big problem at, and that's the fact that God has a law. He's got lots of laws, okay. Okay, the law that I'm thinking about is that water flows downhill, and that's God's law. And the thing is, is this report that's made by these two individuals that I mentioned, they've ignored and they denied it. Not only did they ignore and deny God's law, but they ignored my reports that I gave to them to put in the resilient Titusville report. So that document is, I'm going to say fraudulent, dishonest, so forth. They said, along with ECA, East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, said my information that I submitted as a member of this workshop. So what I'm talking about is this 8A particular item, is that regarding, it has to do with sustainability and resilience. City of Titusville is not resilient. I've said that many times. It's not anything in the report about a professional engineer in the city of Titusville submitting them a signed and sealed report and saying, "The city of Titusville has got problems." Neglected it completely. But you know what I believe? I believe that Mr. Stoffer is going to do the same thing he did when I made a complaint against, no, Mr., this guy, I can't remember his name, Scott something, made a complaint against Mr. Stoffer. I gave maybe six pages of a complaint to Joe DiNero and whom resources. So this has to do with this stuff. And by golly, I was complaining about his dishonesty and so forth, and that's what we're having here, dishonesty in this case, and I'm having, same thing I'm going through with these other two gentlemen, is that, as far as I can see, Mr. Stoffer just took it and threw it in a wastebasket. I never got a report.
But we've got this fraud, you know, that has really bad. And hopefully you'll sue me someday so we can go to court. But this also involves Mr. Stauffer and actually Mr. Broome and city manager. So anyhow, there's, I got three items that has to do with, with that type of stuff. So let me start in with those three, three particular items. And the one, the first one is, is, it's the wrong number.
A?
Is 8A. Yes, it is, 8A. Let me tell you what the second one is. The second one is, my goodness, it looks like it's 8D. And the third one is, is 8O. So I'm going to try to talk about those three items together to try to expedite things because those are the ones that, but the first one, first one, 8A, is I said, I wrote in there against, but I don't want to say that. I want to say against or table because this, this involves a serious amount of dishonesty that I'm going through with Joe DiNero and two of city employees. That's Brad Parish and Edie Galindo, Eddie, Eddie Galindo. Because this has to do with the resiliency and sustainability in the city of Titusville and you guys too, because it has to do with what I filed in Circuit Court. Clerk of the Courts, Bifar County Public Records, I filed an affidavits, including Mr. Jordan, who's one of those, affidavit of gross negligence. And it goes on and on about, and it has to do with, with what Mr. Stauffer and some other people have to do with this because it has to do with, with what I'm an expert at and you have a big problem at, and that's the fact that God has a law. He's got lots of laws, okay. Okay. The law that I'm thinking about is, is that water flows downhill and that's God's law. And the thing is, is this report that's made by these two individuals that I mentioned, they've ignored and they denied it. Not only did they ignore and deny God's law, but they ignored my reports that I gave to them to put in the resilient Titusville report. So that, that, that document is, now I can say fraudulent, dishonest, so forth. They said, along with ECA, East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, said my information that I submitted as a member of this workshop. So what I'm talking about is, is this 8A particular item is that regarding, it has to do with sustainability and resilience. City of Titusville is not resilient. I've said that many times. It's not anything in the report about a professional engineer in the city of Titusville submitting them a re-signed and sealed report and saying the city of Titusville has got problems. Neglected it completely. But you know what I believe? I believe that Mr. Stauffer is going to do the same thing he did when I made a complaint against, no, Mr., this guy, I can't remember his name, Scott something, made a complaint against Mr. Stauffer. I gave maybe six pages of a complaint to Joe DiNero and whom resources. So this is, this has to do with this, this stuff. And by golly, I was complaining about his dishonesty and so forth, and that's what we're having here, dishonesty in this case. And I'm having, same thing I'm going through with these other two gentlemen, is that as far as I can see, Mr. Stauffer just took it and threw it in the wastebasket. I never got a report, nothing. And I don't think it's even in the file. I think it's been just thrown in the wastebasket. In fact, is, I was, I was adding to it, I sent an email, sent it, added it, and I found out a council meeting, he said, hey, you know, we dropped that, that complaint that was against Mr. Stauffer. I never got a report. I think it's just, it's all screwy because, excuse me, I didn't agree with saying that word, but, but, but the thing is, is that it didn't follow any procedures. In other words, I made a complaint, didn't follow any procedures. And that's the way it's going to happen, I think, with these other two gentlemen. There will be no procedures. Everything will be dismissed. That's the way it's happening here in Titusville. So anyhow, but, but the thing is, is I said against, but you could table it also because it needs to be corrected. You need to go back and look at your own resiliency, resilient Titusville report, which is misrepresenting so much. It doesn't, doesn't put the information in it, and I'm talking about drawings and so forth like that, about these, it's about this. Y'all, y'all recognize that picture? You know, that's five culverts out of six that look like, just like this. I mean, the water just goes into the, into the bushes where it's in violation of your stormwater master plan and FEMA regulations and so forth. But anyhow, let's, let me try to speed it up here. I didn't mean to be so slow. Sorry about that. Number three I have is.
D.
Is 8D. Work Order Carroll Avenue. Oh, that's an approval. How did I get that? I messed up. Okay, this is a, I want to approve. Let me just go ahead and do Carroll Avenue because, oh yeah, okay. Even though I approve it, it's, it's an issue with Mr. Stauffer again. And that has to do with Dan Diesel. By golly, it does because that's the ditch that's all, it's just so cluttered up and stuff like that. It, and I complained about it and so forth, and I said it's, it's a hazard to the health of the people and so forth when it gets high water and kids, I mean, it's, it's like a trap, like the doodlebugs do. I mean, you go down there and you could, you could, so anyhow, that needs to be cleaned out because it hasn't been cleaned out in years. So I, I approve that, but it's overdue.
Stop the clock, only because we're looking at each other because you know what I want to say. This is something you like, right? Because when I read this one, I was, I kept waiting for you to get to this one, the Carroll Avenue.
Yes, sir.
All right, there we go. I just thought I'd say that.
Okay, good.
All right, good.
You're a good man.
Start the clock.
Okay. Listen, I got to say a lot of good about Dan Diesel. He is a good guy.
Thank you. You too. Most of the time. All right, let's go. Don't waste your time.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. You're a gentleman. Okay. Which one we're supposed to go to? Next one was?
Uh, D was O. After D was O.
Where is it? I'll find it, I'll find it. Okay. Work order for engineering services of the new master pump station. That has to do with that same guy I've been talking about. And, and that has to do with this. This has to do with Mr. Stauffer very much, that same, that same thing, this thing right here. In other words, he, he was, he headquartered this as far as getting that petition for the park, okay, I mean, Parkland, now Parkland and the State Subdivision, I mean, it, it was turned down by council upon, he was at the time doing the recommendations, he was in, had a stormwater was first put in, I believe that. I could be wrong on that, but I think it was, well, it was discussed while he was, he was in that. So here he is, he's, he's heading out this $287,000, what do you call it? It's a change order. And that's a, that's a good bit of money. I mean, on a lift station, now we're going to get 287,000 change order. I think you need to look at that. I think you should pull it. It's a, because we don't have that much money. We don't have a lot of money. I mean, but he can get it, he can just, you know, raise our water fees and stuff. So, but I'm, I'm, I put on this neither, approving that because, you know, maybe he's got a good idea this time to just go ahead and get it fixed. But I put neither, but I have questions about it because he's bungled so many things, just like this, what do you call it, this force main breaking issue and containment of the sewer but never happened. So that's, that's, that's on that. Let me go to another one. Because y'all don't want to hear about that. I know you don't. Let's go to this, this Kevin Cook, number 8N, Annual Road Resurfacing Project Contract Award. I'm not sure what I can say about that. Fact, I used to work for him. Frankly, he's doing a great job on this and I approve that. I got, is that 10 minutes up already?
Yeah, 10 minutes.
Oh, sorry.
You got stuck on that first one, brother. All right, listen, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. City, city council. I knew that. Council, any questions, concerns about any of these consent agenda items?
I just want to make a.
Member Robinson?
A couple, a couple of items I have questions on, and first is item L, 8L, is, can someone explain to me what that is? So I have a better idea whether that in, you know, I know it's, it's some type of aerator or air flotation thickness, how does it make, but that's, that's the first one. I just want a better understanding of what, what that is.
Yes, sir. So a dissolved airflow thickener unit, it's also called a DAFT unit, and what it's involved in, it's at the Osprey wastewater plant. And what it does is it thickens a byproduct of the treatment process. And so it actually, it adds air, there's also some chemicals that are added as part of the treatment process, and it pulls solids out of the liquid. And that is, there are many unit processes in the wastewater treatment where you're separating liquids from solids. And this is one in that process. And so by removing the solids, you're able to lower the water content somewhat in this unit process so that as we do further processing of the solids, they have less water in them, they're easier to dispose of.
Okay, it turns into some type of filtering system or a separator?
Yes.
Like an, oh yeah, just a separate, not a filter, but a separator?
Yes. Yeah, it actually, the bubbles and the chemicals, they make the solids flock out and it floats to the top and it skimmed off and taken away while the liquid component moves out the bottom.
All right. And the, the other one was item O, is it the pump, is the, is the, I, what I understand in my reading is that staff has to disassemble everything, get everything out of the way for the contractors to come in and, and replace the shaft?
For item O, this is actually for design services to replace the existing master pump station with a new master pump station. So the original master pump station, it's located at the Knox McCray Facility. That is the field operations compound now where Mr. Weiner is the supervisor of. That used to be a wastewater plant, I believe it was Nick, the East Plant, I think it was called, from the 50s, and then it was decommissioned in the 90s. In the 90s, when it was decommissioned, it was turned into the master pump station and some of the tankage from the 1950s, 60s original construction was reused for the master pump station. And so basically what it does is it collects sewage from a large area on the south side of town and then pumps it through a large force main to the Blue Heron Plant. It was created in, along with the projects in 1995 when the Blue Heron Plant was built. Typical for plant processes in a wastewater facility, usually they have a lifespan of about 20 years. And so we've reached that with this facility. We're looking to upgrade as well as we're looking to attach some automation to it. Currently, it only runs in hand, and so that means it must, there must be an employee there running it. We typically use it during high flow, high rain events. This design will also encompass part of our Stop the Spills campaign, part of our, our goal to remove sewage from along the river is to actually, rather than transport it along the river, to actually get it away from the river. And this is going to be a key component where we take the sewage that now is transported up to the Osprey plant, we'll actually be transporting it to the Blue Heron Plant. So the, all the other things along the way must be improved and upsized so that we can move forward with that master planning process.
All right, thank you. And, and the other one is on P, on the Wi-Fi system at the Marina, and I understand they are asking for dollars to put that in. And if there, is the Y, is the system, I know that we have put that under contract, that it makes money to.
Yes, sir. The system's outdated. It, it, it's not functioning. With the addition of bandwidth that's required to run certain things like televisions now, smart televisions, the, the Wi-Fi is not, it doesn't have the appropriate coverage anymore nor does it have the capacity. So this is a replacement. And patrons, when we do surveys, that's one of their requests is that the Wi-Fi system needs replaced.
Okay. You all good? Member Jordan?
I want to make a motion to everybody.
I'll second it.
Okay. Go ahead then.
All right. Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve consent agenda items 8A through 8Q.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion, our consent agenda passes unanimously. 10A, first reading.
We're at 9, 9A?
I'm sorry, did I say 10A?
Which is going to be ordinance number one, 2021 regarding on-street parking. I'd like to read that ordinance title at this time.
Please. Thank you, sir.
Ordinance number one, 2021. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida amending the code of ordinances by amending Chapter 30 Development Standards, Section 30-283 On-Street Parking Credit to amend the areas where on-street parking may count toward required parking, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
Section 30-283 of the Land Development Regulations and the Transportation Infrastructure Technical Manuels limits the utilization of 10% of on-street parking within a 300-foot radius to count towards the minimum parking requirement of a new development in urban mixed-use and downtown mixed-use zoning districts. Additional flexibility with these standards will help meet the infill development and parking policies of the city's comprehensive plan. On August 11th, 2020, City Council approved advisability directing the staff to draft this ordinance. The associated resolution amending the technical manual related to this parking agenda is under your new business. On November 18th, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this proposed ordinance and unanimously recommended approval. As written, staff also recommends the following changes to the on-street parking regulations. Number one, expand the areas on-street parking may count towards required parking for a new development. The enclosed map illustrates the proposed expansion areas. Utilize a greater number of on-street parking towards the required parking in the UMU zoning district in the proposed expansion area. And add a statement that all on-street parking shall be for public use. Mr. Busaka's here. This is your second reading and final public hearing of this ordinance. And, Mr. Busaka?
Mr. Busaka, you have anything to add?
Only if you have questions.
Council, any questions? I see none. Any cards?
No, sir.
Then I can take a motion on this ordinance.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Member Jordan?
Yeah.
We just wanted to clarify the motion, was it a motion to approve? I believe said accept, but if we just clarify, it's a motion to approve. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I make the motion to approve.
And a second. Seconds still hold. We have a second to approve and we're ready to go. Roll call vote.
Thank you, city attorney. I was interested in asking if that was moved to approve as recommended. Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
And Mayor, if I could, the associated technical manual that we addressed with this ordinance is item 12B. So it's approving the technical manual now that you have approved the ordinance. So if you'd like for me to reintroduce, it's the same introduction, but what you're, what you're doing on item 12B is a resolution adopting the technical manual after you've approved the ordinance.
So we will keep that in order? We will get to that?
If you could do it now, that would be okay as well since we, since we just finished that.
Do we need a separate vote for that or we just tied it to it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I have a motion on 12B?
Move to approve resolution number 4-2021 regarding on-street parking.
Second.
I have a motion in a second and I passed up. I need to get to that. Do we have any cards on that?
Good.
No, sir.
No cards. We have a motion in a second. Can I have a roll call vote?
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
City manager?
Yes, sir. Next is item 10A. City Attorney will read ordinance 2-2021, which is a rezone.
Correct. This is rezoning application number two, 2020 Huntington Park, and ordinance number two, 2021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five, 1993, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference, by replacing the present planned development PD zoning ordinance, number 17-2019, a master plan for a certain property approximately 79 plus or minus acres in size, having parcel ID number 223517AV26 located on the west side of Park Avenue, north of Country Club Drive, and providing for an effective date.
This is your first reading of ordinance 2-2021. The second reading and public hearing will be conducted by City Council on January 26, 2021 at 6:30 meeting. On January 6, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with the condition that parking on the road is restricted to a single side using odd and even approach. The vote was five yes, two no. Additional concerns were also discussed by P&amp;Z, which the commission requested be conveyed to City Council, which we have done.
Even those are the first reading. Mr. Busaka, you have anything you want to share with us?
Only if you have questions.
Any questions?
I'm just nosy. I don't understand the odd-even thing. Can you explain that?
I only understand it as it works in New York City, but basically on twos, on odd days, you park on the north side of the street, and on even days, you park on the south side of the street, and sometime in the middle, you run out and see if you can get your car moved from one side to the next.
Wow, that's complicated. So.
Yes, sir, I am.
And we do take cards on the first reading. I see none.
And Mayor, if I, if I could just confirm, I believe this is the item that certain concerns were also provided each council member from P&amp;Z. I want to make sure everybody received those.
Yes, yes.
I do have a question.
Yes, please.
Peggy, I do have a question. First, I want to compliment P&amp;Z and staff. I watched their meeting and it went very nicely. Everybody, everybody was great, including Mr. Moya. So it was nice to watch. No tempers, no anything. Everybody was, everybody was great. And I think they really, they went a little bit long, but okay, we can deal with that. I did have a question in Conservation, Conservation Subdivision versus Planned Development. And I'm not quite sure I totally understood it.
Conservation subdivision was created to allow people to come in and develop their property without going through a rezoning if they say, if they followed the requirements of the code and saved 50% of the property as open space. The planned development is a process by which someone can come in and write their own zoning code, and it requires a 35% open space.
So basically, you have the same sort of requirements?
Well, actually, the planned development requires a rezoning action.
Okay.
The Conservation Subdivision is an incentive that does not require the rezoning.
Okay.
It, it. It allows them to have some flexibility as long as they have the very large incentive of maintaining 50% of the property as open space.
Okay. I will tell you, in, in looking at, the only thing, well, I was sort of concerned because I forgot who it was, was talking about sewage spills and a lift station failing. And that's where it was like, after, you know, the last couple of weeks, my ear sort of went up. Sean's not here, so that concerned me. And the other thing that concerned me was having a narrow road because of emergency vehicles.
So let me explain how that process would work.
Okay.
In the event that the applicant chooses to ask for a waiver, it goes to a group of staff members, including our traffic engineer.
Okay.
And they will review that and determine whether or not they believe that that is safe in this instance, and then that waiver would be provided. It's, it's not a guarantee, and there's a lot of analysis that would go into that. But that would happen at the, at the next phase, at the next step.
But other than that, I have to say, Mr. Moya did a great job.
Awesome.
Yep. So thank you.
Member Stokel?
Yep, thank you. Vice Mayor touched on a couple of things. One, I, I think that the P&amp;Z's approach for their parking situation, I think, was that in response to the road potentially being narrower?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't do anything with that? That would go to staff, correct?
Unless you understand the trade-off is the wetland impacts.
Yeah.
And that's the reason that the road is being narrowed. So I, counsel could tell staff that this 22 feet is not, cannot be considered, and because right now, the, the ordinance says that it can be considered with a waiver. So you could put it in the ordinance that it must be 26 feet wide instead of the 22, and then we would not be able to consider that waiver. However, you do understand that that would increase the impacts to the wetlands.
Do we have any subdivisions that you're aware of that has the 22 feet right now?
I'm not really sure, but what I can do is do some research for you.
Okay.
I do know that this is not an uncommon issue that is addressed by other communities, and that in my previous life, they did have 22 feet wide paved areas. So it's actually, it's not uncommon. I, I don't know how many of you are familiar with US 1 between O'Gally and Melbourne Causeway? They took a four-lane road and made it into a six-lane road? And the way they did that was to make the, the lanes narrower? And actually, that's good for traffic calming, because you don't move as quickly on a road where you feel a little more constrained. And if you have driven down a subdivision before, and there are cars parked along the street, you don't move as quickly. So those subdivisions are actually safer, because children playing in that kind of thing, the people are less likely to be going at, at a quick speed. So there are reasons why people use narrower lanes. In this case, it's largely environmental, but there are also traffic calming benefits to that.
Yeah, I, I feel like I have been in some neighborhoods that do have them, and when you see people parking on both sides of the street, it does make me a little concerned, because I don't think we could enforce it to make sure an emergency vehicle could get there. So I'm not the hugest fan of narrow roads, but I also don't like impacting our wetlands, so that's a difficult situation. I think this was brought up by somebody, I want to say at P&amp;Z or an email, the aspect of low-impact development, was that looked at? I feel like we weren't able to do much with this one.
It was, and staff can identify, I believe staff identified five, five ways in which low-impact development is part of this, is part of this subdivision. It's actually in the, in the report. What I will do, rather than spend your evening, because I know it's been a long one, is I will make sure that I highlight that at the next meeting.
Okay. And then lastly, do you mind just touching briefly on the reasoning behind going from 110 units down to 86, and why that was necessary?
I think that Mr. Moya would be better.
Okay, perfect.
I was hoping I didn't have to talk tonight. Seeing as there wasn't an audience. Yeah, sorry. Bruce Moya, President of MBV Engineering, project engineer on the project representing the applicant. My office is at 1250 West O'Gally Boulevard in Melbourne, Florida. So yeah, so some of you remember me when I was back here, when we got the initial approval. And when we did that initial approval, the level of detail wasn't required. So because it got approved, the bank got to sell the property, which was the original intent, and they actually sold it to Holiday Builders. So there's now a developer that owns the property. When we did, when we got the final surveys, we got the topo, we got a correct boundary survey, because the original surveyor made a mistake on the original boundary. They gave us more land than we, than we had. So that mistake was corrected. And with the, because this is a really delicate balancing act we've done on this project between tree preservation, floodplain compensation, extreme grade differentials, wetland protection, open space requirements. You know, we're running the gambit here of all the issues we have to look at to come up with what we came up with, and 110 lots was impossible. We could not meet all the requirements with 110 lots. We reduced it down to the 86 lots. We have, one, another reason for the smaller roads was to make the retention ponds as small as possible, because if you can reduce the impervious area, we can make the retention pond smaller, therefore preserve more open space, preserve more trees. And Peggy was correct in her previous life, and we still do many subdivisions in Brevard County, and also in Palm Bay, and their road requirement is 22 feet. Correct me if I'm wrong, Peggy, but if the city's requirement is 26 feet, our actual pavement width is 26 feet from curb back of curb to back of curb. So I don't know if you have curb in your subdivision, but I do in mine, and people park at the edge of the curb. So you have the full 26 feet of pavement width. You only have an 11-foot lane, two 11-foot lanes, and then two 2-foot curbs. So you still have the 26-foot pavement as opposed to 26, and then four more to make it actually 30. So, but Palm Bay, all their subdivisions are 22-foot lanes or roads. Brevard County is 22-foot road, so we don't feel it's a safety issue. We've reduced the lots on that side of the wetland. And even looking, and I know some of the concerns was, you know, hey, you're crossing a wetland, what happens if the water rises? Well, we're, one, we're three feet higher than the floodplain, and then, two, there's, I noticed there are several subdivisions where they have extremely long roadways that between them, between, over a wetland, between the main road and them. Was it Windover Farms or the Great Outdoors, to be specific, is extremely long entrance road from whatever that main road that runs east-west to their first lot is, is a road across a wetland that's probably half a mile to a mile long, and has, I don't know how many hundreds of lots. So we don't feel it's an issue. We're going to design it to make sure it doesn't blow out or flood. We think that the road width is going to be okay. And then just the fact that we've reduced the intensity of the development by reducing the lot count. And when you mentioned LID, I guess it was really kind of unintentional, because I'm not an LID guy. But when we looked at the different aspects of this, and we talked to the guy at Marine Resources Council, I guess he's the Director of the Marine Resources Council, he actually removed his objection once we sent him the plan. He said, wow, this is really LID-friendly. So he was really excited about it. So, you know, we're excited about it, and we think that this is going to be a, really a model subdivision for the city, because we're only developing a third of the property. Everything else is staying undeveloped. So I think it's really going to be a showcase for the city and the direction that they're headed with the tree ordinance and some of the other things that you guys are looking at. So I was hoping I didn't have to put a presentation together tonight. I hope that answers your questions, but if there are any more, I'd be happy to answer them. I figured I'd be here even longer than this, so I've got time.
I just have one more follow-up, if that's okay, Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely.
So just to clarify, with the reduction in units, did you reduce the lot size, the minimum lot size, or?
No, no, we did not. The only thing we reduced was the minimum lot width on the lots that are on a curb.
Okay.
Pie-shaped lots are actually larger lots, but there was a reduction in, because what happens is when you get to the road, the frontage isn't as big, but when you get to the setback, their, their front, their, their frontage is okay. So we just asked for that slight little reduction.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I had.
Excuse me if I could. I found the information about the LID. It was in the minutes of P&amp;Z. The best practices that have been included that be, that are LID are protecting the wetlands, preservation of open space, preserving tree canopy, clustering the design by minimizing the building footprint and providing trees along the roadway. So those five are considered best management practices for LID.
Very good. Your information is good, and I think sets the table for the second reading, but I think you might stand there longer for the second.
I think you're correct on that.
We'll see how that goes. Thank you. Any kind of questions, Counsel? Thank you very much. Appreciate you. City Manager, I see no old business?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We're to item 12A, which is to provide direction to staff regarding the proposed ordinance relating to establishing a public purpose variance process. On December 8, 2020, City Council approved advisability for staff to develop a process by which City Council could approve variances to land development regulations for projects determined to further public purposes. Staff was also asked to provide information regarding the approaches used by other communities to address public interest, public purpose projects. The information is part of your packet. The proposed ordinance would establish a process and criteria by which City Council could approve variances for projects determined to serve a public purpose as determined by council. And again, we're, you're not voting on anything. We're just looking for direction on this, and from what we've proposed so far, is there anything you think we need to adjust?
I would just add, and it's pretty much what I added last time, that is, I don't want to see all of these come our way, but I do think that the public part of this is something that we as elected officials should have the opportunity to weigh in on. And obviously, we would, you know, pass or fail. So I just want us to be specific to what we would see. And I think, to me, that's the biggest thing I want to see coming out of this. I don't want to just say that all comes our way, or, you know, I want a division that we don't see them all. And, Member Jordan?
Okay, I agree with the mayor and what he said, but also, I guess, I need clarity as far as requirements for public development versus private development. I'm not sure we have that in there, because if it's just the same criteria, and we're just going to be looking at it and making a decision.
What's proposed to you is not an appeal process. So the question about everything coming to you, the thing that this would allow council to do, if council was so inclined, is to consider a process that involves variances associated with public projects. So wouldn't be an appeal. You would hear the variance, as opposed to your Board of Adjustments and Appeals hearing the variance. You would hear the variance as long as that variance is associated with what is defined in here to be a public purpose project. In the first paragraph under applicability in this draft, says public purpose project means a public or private project which demonstrates a net benefit to the public as determined by City Council, such as public transportation facilities, water, wastewater drainage, public accessible parks, public safety facilities. So it could only be a project that you deem constitutes a public purpose, not a private purpose. If you think it meets that qualification of being a public purpose project, what I heard is council thinks or would like to weigh in on variances associated with those projects.
Exactly.
This would allow requests to be conditioned on that criteria of being public, not merely a private purpose. If the project qualifies as a public purpose as determined by you, you could consider granting the variance, which, according to criteria, would be the minimum necessary to accomplish a public project, based on the criteria set forth in here. So it's a situation where if there's a public project and you deem it as such, you could consider a variance request, what I'd say is like out of practical necessity for a public project, and is it the minimum variance required? And if you look in this draft, there's several criteria listed. Is it consistent with the overall intent of regulations and not contrary to public interest? The minimum to make possible the full implementation of a project? Does it provide direct public benefits which exceed those that may be lost? The applicant has demonstrated a bona fide need for the variance based upon the operational necessity, conditions of the property, where the little, literal enforcement of the code would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship. So you have that variance criteria, but that's what this would address.
Okay, just as an example, if, if we have a requirement that says this needs to be a 20-foot setback, but for the public purpose, it really needs to be a 10-foot setback, would that be something?
Correct. Maybe you're going to build a fire station, or a police station, or another public facility on a piece of property, and you need a setback variance to accomplish that or another variance. That what, what council would be saying by implementing this or adopting this code is, we would like to look at that public facility variance, as opposed to those going to VAA.
Okay. And that's, that goes with one that's near and dear to my heart. For a private person, if you're building like a garage, requirement is to have a certain number of shrubs around the garage. If that comes before us for the public purpose, and we deem that you usually don't need 25 shrubs, but 15 is acceptable, that would be something that we could agree to.
Well, you'd have to be clearly a public purpose. I'm not sure a private garage, how it qualify, but, you know, for instance, a stormwater project, we did one at the mall where we had pub, we determined a lot of that to be public purpose, because it was improving the stormwater for the area. It wasn't just for that private development, but it improved the general area and stormwater, and we saw that as public purpose. Maybe that could be, if you determine that type of project to be a public purpose project, you could entertain those variances.
I really wasn't talking about the garage. I was talking about the shrubbery. There's a requirement in our codes, talking about a certain amount of shrubbery, where the shrubbery should be and all that stuff. Have determines, if we determine that you don't need all that shrubbery, you don't need those trees or anything, you may need some, but not all that is required in the code.
Right, if it was associated with a public purpose project that you determined to be a public, so purely private variances would not come to this council. So the first thing you would have to do is look at the application and make that first qualifying decision. Do we, as a council, believe this is a net public benefit not achieving a private purpose? And if it does, then you would apply the criteria and determine whether or not to grant the variance.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. You're up.
Richard, is there concerns about this, is that it may create the image that the council is trying to pay their, get an advantage over some of the things that they may want to do that may not go before the Board of Adjustment?
I imagine, there could be. There could, people, people could view that, that you're looking to just at the public projects as council, and not all projects, and why don't those go to the BA as well? And why does council want to do this? And if council determines on home rule powers that, you know, we want to look at public projects, that we, that is what you asked us to bring to you. And of course, you could decide not to do this. You could decide to have, continue to have all variances go to VAA. There are some, you know, you do have that authority now under certain development agreements, under home rules, grant variances and certain criteria when you do development agreements that are home rule power agreements. There are other, and I know Peggy, I know Peggy did the research. If you're interested in, you know, the county or other types of variances they give for public interest-type projects, but you're right, there's always could be that criticism. Yes, sir.
That's my concern on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's a valid concern. I think truthfully, and I could be wrong on this, I think truthfully, it might be the only concern, because we're not trying to infringe upon the private sector, we're simply talking about public work kind of things. But you make a point that maybe it's a power grab that we want to have that say and take it away from the, the other board. So. So I, I, I'm not saying either way. I'm just saying that I think it's a valid point. Uh, anybody else want to comment on this one? Uh, member Stokoe, you up there?
Yes, thank you. Um, okay, so I think that we're all on the same page, that we definitely don't want to hear any of the private purpose ones. With that would stay at BAA. So my question would be, if, in regards to the public purpose ones, if, would our option be that all of them would come to us? Or could it be that they still all go to BAA and they could come to us should we deem necessary? How would that, no, it's either they all public come to us or not?
You really want to treat all similarly situated people in a similar manner, not have a disparate impact. That's why this wasn't written, that it's just for publicly owned property, public, um, entities. It was public or private, it's the project we were looking at, you know, doesn't qualify for that public purpose. So it could even be private or public. We weren't looking at the owner of the property. We're looking at the type of project that would qualify as public and whether council deems it appropriate under your powers to look at public projects and determine variances. So in my opinion, you wouldn't pick and choose, I want a public project to go to be out, or we're going to look at this particular public project. Because I don't know why, how you differentiate between the particular public project you want to evaluate.
It would be after the fact potentially, but the only way to do that after the fact is to go to the court, not to be able to come to council. Is that correct?
Currently, right, currently, any appeal of your Board of Adjustments and Appeals is to circuit court. And same thing here. If council entertains a variance, then it would be a final order. You know, there's no one else to appeal that to, and, and there's appeal processes in here that would be deemed a final order, and they would have to appeal it through that process. So no, currently, there is not a process where you hear appeals from your BAA.
Okay.
And if you did, you would just be applying the exact same criteria. Under an appeal, you don't have criteria. You would be looking at a decision from your Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and you would determine and apply the criteria whether they were, in your opinion, they applied the criteria correctly and they're right or wrong.
So there would be, I guess what I'm getting at, there's no way to look at BAA as a recommending body, similar to P and Z, for instance?
Well, no.
Where we don't necessarily agree with their interpretation.
Some cities, a lot of cities have, you know, subdivision variances. We don't. But subdivision variances will go to their council, not to their BAA.
Okay.
Uh, and in that case, a lot of the cities that do that, they can, the P and Z will weigh in and make recommendations on those variances.
I see.
But here, all of, most, all appeals will go to BA. We don't have that subdivision appeal process. But there are cities where their councils do hear variance requests, such as, I said, subdivisions. Or at the county, it might be their coastal setback provisions, where it, when deemed a public interest, I believe is their phrase, public interest project, which is defined as a public, a, a project that, uh, results in a net benefit to the public, not the private. In those cases, then those can go, I think, to the county manager, or if he's not comfortable, certain ones will go to the commission. But they weigh in on those variances for public projects, for coastal setbacks.
One of the examples that brought this issue forward was, um, putting some generators at lift stations. And the landscaping requirements, um, that are required by code would make us do certain landscaping around our lift station. And it would, it would be a hardship, because we wouldn't be able to service the lift station correctly, um, if we had to do that, that sort of landscaping. So that's an example of a public purpose project that we would come before you as the, um, home room powers to say, in this particular case, this lift station benefits the public, and it's a hardship to put this, um, landscaping in. So you would be to determine, and I think somebody mentioned a fire station that may not have the proper setbacks, um, in order to, to, to accomplish that. But you would, you would determine that under your home room pow, powers for public projects.
Um, I, I don't have a strong opinion either way. My concern would be, I don't want our hands to be tied to this board and us not be able to do anything if they're not making potentially sound decisions. Granted, the other end is we appoint who's on the board too, so that's where we do have some control. Um, yeah, that's kind of where.
Yeah, let, let me interject a question here, and it may have already been answered in a roundabout sort of way. Who decides who gets what case? Like we just talked about, the, um, the plants around the, what was it, the water station or the?
Lift, lift station.
Lift station. Um, that's definitely public, but what if it's next door to an area that's private, and they're concerned about some of the planting that went on, and it affects them too? So I think that takes me back to member Robinson's concern. Who decides which ones are shuffled to us and which ones are shuffled to the, the board?
In my opinion, if you adopt this process, an applicant would have to apply when, in their opinion, this is a public purpose project. So the first thing, if they, so it'd be up to an applicant to apply. If they apply, it'd be up to you to make that decision of whether or not this is a net public benef, benefit versus private. If you say no, that would have to go to BAA. So an applicant, if it's a private individual or public says, we think this qualifies, they would file and come to you first. That's their decision on, if they think they qualify as public, then you make that decision. So if, if an applicant, as I said, you know, for example, is, uh, the mall previously, I just want to use that because it was an old project that had a stormwater pond, and they felt it was helping regional stormwater. In their opinion, that was a public purpose, not just merely private. And they, one, they said, well, I'm going to take this to council because I think it qualifies. Council would evaluate that project and determine whether they feel it's a net pub, benefit to the public and qualifies to be heard by you. Then you would apply that criteria, um, as far as it would be a public hearing. So just as BAA, notice would go to the, in the newspaper and to the residents, and you would hold that quasi judicial hearing and apply the criteria in the same manner of Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and you would make that decision.
So, uh, uh, to play, and again, I think, member Robinson, you opened something up to me a little bit. But it sounds like, no pun intended tonight, but it muddies the waters a little bit, because now we, it's not like it's on our agenda, this is, you guys need to decide this. Now we got to decide if we decide.
Well, at that same hearing, the first, if I'd say the first threshold at that hearing is, is this a public purpose? And you would take the testimony and decide that. And if it is, then you would hear the variance. If you don't, at that point, in my opinion, you would say, we don't believe this qualifies, and you need to go to BAA.
And I know we have some concerns and some reasons to do this, but I would go back to, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I'm kind of wavering a little bit here. Um, Ms. Musaka, do you have something?
I'm not sure it's. I'm not sure I would agree that it ain't broke.
And, and I don't know, and, and maybe that, you know, and, and we certainly have, you know, gotten some information. But I get a little concerned when I say, how, which gets filtered here and which gets filtered there. And the answer seems to be, it will come to us with a quasi judicial, and we have to decide if it's ours to make a decision on.
Well, first of all, I think that the staff would look at whatever ordinance and say, this is the criteria. And we would counsel someone who said, I believe that we meet this criteria. We would say, can you, you have to show, you'll have to show to council this, this, and this before. So I think that this wouldn't really happen that often. But, um, Mr. Larisse made an excellent point. We're trying to put in, we have a FEMA grant to put in nine additional, uh, generators, because these, um, lift stations failed during the most recent event, storm events. And I guess you know what happens when a lift station fails. So, um, the issue was, what, the code is not clear as to whether there should be landscaping around that. The people in water resources have said, operationally, it is very challenging for us to determine if a lift station is operating properly if it is covered with landscaping.
Yeah.
So that is an operational issue. I'll give you another example. On top of those lift stations, there is going to be an antenna. Now, right now, the code does not specifically allow antennas, but they don't operate without an antenna. So as we are, I, I can't speak for what used to happen in the city, but we have now said, local projects have to go through a site plan review. And we're beginning to see that some of the regulations that make wonderful sense in 99% of the cases don't work for public projects. I'll give you another example. I, if, next time that you come to, uh, the second floor, I invite you to stand in the, um, building official's, um, office and look across the street at the fire station. There are several antennas on that building. The code does not specifically allow an antenna like that, but without an antenna, your fire department doesn't work. So the question is, do you want to allow antennas on all buildings? Or do you want to allow antennas that are needed for operational issues? That's your question. So the question now is, do we write the code in such a way that antennas may show up on all buildings? Or is it acceptable that we need an antenna for a fire station, and perhaps we don't need one on top of a condominium?
And that's where we come in with the public decision.
Yeah. Yes, sir. And those are the kind of operational issues that we've identified. And I, I really do not expect that you will see many of these. But I do expect that occasionally, there will be an operational issue. And we can either send those to the BAA, or we can bring them here.
Member Jordan?
Yeah, the concern, I appreciate you explaining that. Um, the big concern I have is, from what I understand, if the BAA says, no, you're not going to get a variance, the only way you could really resolve this is actually go to court. We don't need to go to court when, you know, I, I really have always had a problem since I've been on council. If we're the one that's appointing people who are not elected, then we should have the final word on things. And, and that's not happening. You know, the, the P and Z, you know, they tell it what they think, and then we decide what we, we want to do. But for the BAA, they, it seems like they have a great deal of power. And if you get the wrong person on there, you could have a lot of problems, and I just don't want that. I think, I don't, I think Peggy explained it very well as far as the process is concerned. We're talking about public thing, and most of the time, I would think it's going to be a public entity that's going to come before us with the application, I would think.
I, I would think so as well.
So if that's the case, it's, it's pretty simple. It's going to, it's probably going to be us. It's going to be, it's going to be the city that's going to come and say, we need to do this. We got to put antennas up here, but the code doesn't require us. What do you guys think? Of course, common sense is going to say, yeah, you got to put an antenna up, you know, so.
I'm sort of thinking too, that by coming to us, it makes your process a little bit shorter.
Well, yes, ma'am. I, I would think that there's a potential for that. Of course, there's still going to be the notice. There's still going to be sending letters to the people adjacent, so they have the opportunity to come in. So it's not like it's, will be instantaneous, but I do, there is the potential, because, um, you know, BAA could table things. Of course, you could table things as well. But, um, I would think that that was possible.
And, and you would hear before you the discussion of the, those that are interested in the antennas on top of the fire station's building and, um, the opposition for and against. So that, that, you're still going to be the decision maker, but there are some exceptions that we were seeking for operational reasons.
And if I could say one other thing, there are communities who simply say that, um, local government projects don't have to go through any project review.
That would be easier.
Well, I can tell you that if there were operational departments here this evening, they would be voting yes for that. But the city has chosen to say that we have standards and we want to move forward. So the other option is simply, and I think that this is opening a very large door instead of a window, uh, what other communities do, which is to say, you don't have to go through any of these criteria. But as we learned this evening, um, we talked, I heard about water pipe, sewer pipes getting up in the air, and that's maybe not aesthetically pleasing, so you have to balance that out, but.
So maybe we should do the window first?
Well, that's my suggestion, but, um, the good news is, I don't make that decision.
I, I vote for the window here.
I was going to call your name, but you already started.
I served for that.
Remember, Jordan caught that. Um, to conclude, I, I don't know that you have enough, but I will say that the fire, uh, building story and then member Jordan's follow kind of made me see exactly where we're at. This won't be something that we are dealing with every meeting. It sounds like it would be a rarity. It sounds like, and this hit me in the right way, when member Jordan said likely it would be a city issue dealing, that we would be dealing with, you know? So the fire station is a wonderful example. I hope that you're at least, because I'm not quite exactly sure. Obviously, I've been over here and over here, and, and I'm not quite sure that I want to muddy the waters, but it doesn't sound like we're muddying waters. It sounds like when we have an issue where we can't have antennas, but we got to have antennas, we should be able to say you can have antennas. As simple as that. So I, I'm, I'm all for that, and I hope you have enough, because we don't want to talk about it anymore. Yeah, me too.
Mr. Mayor, they were just looking for guidance on this?
Yes, they're just, this is not a vote. This is just.
Guidance on this, because, you know, I'm still in the muddy water state?
Correct. This is just advise.
Okay.
This is whether or not a majority of council would like us to move forward and come back with an ordinance for your consideration in the future.
I think we would all like that, and, and we, it still gives us a chance to unmuddy the waters.
One of the other consider, of course, your BAA, just so you know, familiar. To get a variance through your Board of Adjustments and Appeals requires four out of five votes in favor of a variance.
Okay.
So whether or not when council wants to do variances, whether you just leave it at your majority vote or not, that's also a direction you could give us.
Okay, are we good? Okay, then.
Do we have to put direction on that, Mark?
That's.
You know, for drafting, if you have that direction now, or if, as we bring it back to you.
I'd like to see it come back. I think that there's, I, I kind of want to see something more concrete.
Does council require a super majority vote?
Majority or just a majority?
I think that's.
Majority?
I'd say majority.
Majority?
Okay, it's still time to think about that.
Okay.
All right, moving right along.
We are to, uh, item C, which is a litigation settlement agreement. Uh, attorney Renee Stevens Lundey, a firm dean, ringers, Morgan and Lawton, was assisting the city with representation of a lawsuit involving an automobile crash with a city vehicle, which occurred on June 11th, 2019. As recommended by legal counsel acting on behalf of the city, this proposed, uh, this proposal for settlement resolves all damages that would otherwise be awarded in a final judgment resulting in dismissal with prejudice. The proposed settlement amount is $125,000, and it does fall under our insurance.
And our, um, is this a vote of approval here?
Yes, sir. We brought to you to approve this so that we could finish the settlement of this case.
Okay, do I have a motion to do so?
I'd move to approve the litigation settlement regarding Warwick versus City of Titus.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes unanimously.
I believe during petitions and requests, both officers would like to speak before council.
Okay. No, I know this guy doesn't. I, I know that guy doesn't. Okay, uh.
Yes, sir. You're on to mayor and council reports.
Counsel, I would like to have this, where you guys go first, whatever you have, then I would go, and then we'll follow. City manager would be the way we'll go. So council members?
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Okay, I didn't want to bring this up earlier, because I figured this was going to really make that 5:30 meeting longer. But I think we probably ought to consider either closing the park or putting fencing around ponds. The odor's still there. It's, it's dissipating, obviously. We probably should have done it earlier, but I think that it would make our citizens feel a little more comfortable and secure, knowing that that, those areas are blocked off. What do you guys think?
Well, I'm going to jump here in here. I learned that from Wal. Jump in here. I'm going to jump in here. I'm going to jump in here. First of all, I would need to ask, when it comes to fencing around the water area, the pond area, is that us or is that county?
We would be paying and installing it.
In all fairness, to give a little history, I actually stood at a much bigger podium years and years ago. I believe Tom Mariani was the mayor. And I was the vice president of Titus Little League. And we were asking for, you know, some fencing around some of the water areas. And I believe that particular pond, I've got to go back now, was that even there? But there were some water areas we wanted some fencing around. At that time, the frustration we had on the board of directors at Titus Little League was we were county, no, city owned, county maintained. And at that time, the runaround was, well, we own it, but the county takes care of it. And then the county would say, well, we don't own it, so we can't do that. Capital projects were the biggest problem. So when it came to capital projects, it was ping pong, back and forth, back and forth. I would endorse fencing around for safety reason more than anything else. I'm not quite sure where you're going, because certainly it's not going to keep any smell away. So you were going the same direction?
Basically the same direction. I think we have some citizens out there, they're very concerned that, I think most of them understand that we're doing the best we can. And I got to tell you, when that break happened, it must have been crazy. Because, you know, they were talking about communication. And I'm like, that's not what you think about. The first thing you think about is, oh, my God, how do I stop it? But I think it would give citizens some comfort. And I'm not talking about anything permanent. I'm talking about something temporary for the next ten days.
If I could suggest, the water quality on the east pond, which is the biggest one.
Yeah.
The, and again, I'm not a technical expert on this, but Sean is going to speak with DEP at the end of the week because the water quality is almost back to normal in that pond.
So maybe, maybe just the west pond?
And we are focusing on the west pond. Access to that pond would be along the sidewalk, along US 1, and along the road in the park itself. We would have a challenge putting a fence completely around it because of the location of it.
And I would digress a little bit away from the short-term thing, going back thirty-seven years. When I first asked for that, when you, and it's just kind of come up. But when you have the playground and the park and all those things with little kids over there, it's always, always concerned me that you have a sixteen-foot pond right there that I would just like to see protected. And certainly we can discuss that as we go. It's certainly not an agenda item. But I would like to see, and several people mentioned that to me today. And I remember, I showed, I said, I remember standing up there in front of city council, asking for a fence around that pond because of, especially when Titus Little League down there. Because they all went straight from the ballpark to the swings and everything. And we had some of those little boys that wanted to go swim it.
So perhaps, because the, we're talking about the west pond.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Well, I could, I could say both, quite honestly, because the park is closer to the west one, yes.
Yeah. The west pond itself, we could come back with a, you know, a cost estimate at your next meeting to see what it would cost us to fence that and make it a permanent.
Yes, that's what I'm looking for.
Make it a permanent safety feature, if you will.
And that's exactly what mine was, a safety feature.
And also, that is the pond that's going to take us the longest time to clean up. So now, again, I can't tell you how, you know, it'll be two weeks before your next meeting. Contract to put a fence around that, you know.
I get that, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. But I can certainly get back with you. I do believe that, again, the east pond, the water quality of that, I'm guessing again, I'm estimating, a couple more weeks and that will, we will have that one open. We've already blocked off the east from the west pond because the water quality of the east pond is so much higher than the west pond. So now we're focusing on getting that one where the break occurred cleaned up. And so I agree with you, that is the closest point we have with the swing sets.
Yeah.
Now, I feel remiss that I hadn't said that before. And the focus has now come there. And the number of times I drove out there and I parked over by that area and walked around, and then having my grandkids out there, I thought about it many a times. Like I said, I actually stood in front of there probably in the late eighties. And, you know, we asked for a fence around that at that time, simply because, you know, all the, there's a little kid park and within fifteen to twenty, thirty seconds max, they could be over in that water.
Yes, sir. And just to add, you remember where the splash park is?
Right.
And it's still got, you got to run across a field to get to the east park, I mean, the east body of water. But from the splash park, it's really located very close to the swing sets. So if you're not watching Junior or something, you know, that could be that direction that they may head to.
I think that would be a good proactive move on our part that I should have noted a long time ago.
But I think, thank you. There was another concern. First of all, I'm visualizing a four-foot fence, not a six-foot fence.
I would too.
Regular standard chain link fence.
Right. But I'm also thinking it should be green or something. I just don't want anything ugly out there. You know, you can get just a regular chain link fence and it just looks, it needs to be athletic, aesthetically pleasing, in my opinion. But there are a couple of other things that, and I appreciate you bringing this up because I didn't want to say it when the crowd was there. But looking at the signage that we use, to me was very small, extremely small.
Yeah, we've actually ordered some, very similar to your campaign signs.
Okay, that's, yeah.
I don't know, I can't remember what you call those things.
Billboards.
Not billboards.
They're the kinds that you stick in the ground and, yeah.
So we definitely need that. But the other question, and I don't know how you do it, because we got those aerators out there. And of course, some were complaining about the spray coming towards them. I don't see you doing anything about that, but it was a concern. So I'm not sure what you can do about it.
Yeah, the additional aerators that are installed, if you look at them, they're just bubbling.
Oh, they're just bubbling up?
Yeah, it's not raising water.
Okay.
The other permanent aerators that are in those ponds are the ones that are fountain looking.
I do have another question, though. I didn't even realize there was fish in those ponds. And so hopefully, the signage does say something about no fishing or like that.
There are signs posted now around that. And I believe it's several of the ponds, even over Marina Park, it says no casting, no fishing, no, none of that stuff. Because they are treatment ponds, they're not intended to be recreational fishing.
Yeah.
Can we turn the big fountain kind of aerators off and leave the small?
We'd actually like to leave them on, ma'am, because it's speeding the process.
It moves around. Member Stokel, I'm going to get to you after there's almost a discussion. You're up.
That was, no, that was my question too. I've had so many people ask about the fountains. They were just complaining about them, people going to the park, they could feel it go on them. They were worried about breathing it in. I know I mentioned it in our meeting. I was just curious about how, yeah, the pros and cons of how quickly it is speeding up the process versus potential harm it's doing to the public.
My understanding of the bacteria that is in the pond, when it hits the air, it dies. So when you're taking the water up out of the pond and it hits air, it's killing it.
Okay.
So that's the purpose of the aeration. And then you're also adding oxygen back into the water.
Okay. Beyond my educational background, but yeah, I think it just concerns, I mean, I think the mayor touched on it, going out there, his eyes burned when I was going by there. It did burn my eyes and it just, it makes me concerned health-wise for people that are out there.
I will say, when mine were burning and I went out to see everybody, I was actually on the other side of, meaning that I didn't have any spray. It's just, and when it first started, it was the stench was pretty strong and my eyes were literally burning. But it wasn't from the water.
And a follow-on with DEP, they did recommend aerating. And again, their recommendation was just to allow the aeration to take care of the bacteria. Don't remove the water, you don't have to do that. We've removed a million and a half gallons and we're going to continue to do that until the water levels are acceptable again.
Did they have any comments on whether, like, citizens can be in the area or anything like that, safety concerns?
No, the requirement is, we're meeting the requirement.
Okay.
And the requirement is to declare that this water is not safe to be swimming, fishing, playing, et cetera. And.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me move forward here because we got running around a little bit. And I did want to say, we certainly, you know, congratulated the presentation and the people back there. But, and it was at least mentioned that you did this. But I want to thank you for the, I don't know, we're up to about thirty-two? The number of reports are, and you know, I appreciate them. I do my best just to reply to you and say thank you. Because I want you to know that they're being read, it's important, you know, this has been a thorn in my side and bothering me since the day I got out there. It's one of those things where I just wanted it over, I wanted it fixed, I wanted it fixed. And it wasn't going to be like that. But you gave us constant information, I appreciate that. And I'll go a step further, when we have a major incident, and I must admit, sitting in the mayor's seat, I feel a little bit more this way, that when something happens, I need to know, because everybody thinks I know everything. And I don't. And when I don't, it's kind of embarrassing when they know more than I do because they got it in Florida today. That doesn't happen very often because of you. And, you know, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. I don't know what other city managers do, but, you know, it's ten o'clock at night or whatever time it was, and you got information from chief and you passed it on to us and, you know, we had the information. So between the stormwater issue and everything else that comes down, I appreciate it. And I just really want to thank you for that part.
Sure, yeah, we definitely have a great team. And I will tell you, oversight, I heard from some of the people tonight, was we didn't get it on our website fast enough. I will tell you, and it is an oversight. And we didn't have all the facts yet, so we didn't want to post things that we didn't know to be true. A council member said, well, now that you know, can you start putting them up on there? And what we did is we put a summary to begin putting, posting those, so people could start from the information that we knew and then read the subsequent updates. So I think that's effective, we've gotten some good feedback from that. But I, like everybody else, I was razor-focused on trying to figure out what it was.
And I was going to say, having been closer to this issue than I have been most, meaning that I went out there five or six times and I was in communication with you on a daily basis, and the number of times that you said to me, when I was impatiently asking for, I'm still asking, what are we going to be done, what are we going to be done? You very much said, we don't know this one yet, we don't have this answer yet, you know. And so it doesn't do any good to post something you aren't sure about. So I appreciate that too, and it's just hard to post. You can't just post the post. You got to post because you know. So that created some of the delay that I don't really want to call a delay, you just didn't have the information to post. So I appreciate that. All right, so we're going to kind of redo this, meaning that if you have anything you want to say that you've been doing as far as council reports, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead. And I just want to ditto that the city manager is putting out good information, keeping us informed. And I too read all of the information that I received. And it affords me the ability to, if I'm addressed by, you know, the citizens, I can talk knowledgeable to a certain degree about the matter. Also, we, I, the caution is if, and I think that city manager took it in the right way, that if you put up estimation and guestimations, you end up in the wrong place. So only posting the things that you have a certain, even though that if you post everything that you know, someone is going to complain.
Absolutely.
And on the, be careful as we move forward on fencing in things out at Sandpoint because probably just as many folks are, want that those ponds fenced in, it's probably the same amount that's going to tell you that it's an eyesore when you put them out there.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, sir, and we'll bring back, you know, some plans and cost estimates to council. And I agree with you, I think you're going to have a split, split ideas on that.
But everything's going well.
All right, Member Jordan.
Okay. You're welcome for me being so patient with all of you. I'm very, very patient, for sure.
Always have been.
Of course, I'm going to say kudos to Scott and his staff, he did an excellent job. I think one of the most important things that Scott, you did and your staff was brought each one of us in individually and had that presentation presented to us. I will never, ever, and I've never done in my whole political life, ever tried to make the executive look bad in the public. But when you're in the private meetings, that's when you ask those hard questions and you, you know, get to the nitty-gritty. And I must say, I felt very comfortable after that meeting, knowing where we are. And actually, it was very interesting to me. I, my background is actually civil engineering, so all that, you know. I never wanted to chase manure or build bridges or anything, but that's, that was my background. So it's very much appreciated. And honestly, I'm going to be a little political here. I wish more people in Washington would be like we are here on this dice because we're civil, we don't do this political stuff. We make decisions based on what we know, our knowledge, and listen to the public and then make our decisions. So I'm very much appreciative of that. And the last one is a little controversial, and hopefully I'll get some support from you, ma'am. If you remember, there was a proclamation that was not approved by the last mayor. I would ask that you reconsider that, you wanted to modify, you asked for a copy of it to modify a little bit. So if you could do that and give it to him and let him look at it. I will get it to you.
I can do that. Mr. Broom offered to do it.
Okay. He did? He's looking funny now.
Yeah. The resolution?
Mickey.
Mickey McCallion brought in?
No, remember, we actually, it was kind of confusing to me because it came to us like it was already a resolution. And I think what happened, Virginia put it together like a resolution.
Yeah, it was, I believe it was a proclamation.
Proclamation, I'm sorry.
And what Virginia did was just take what the draft was and showed you what it would look like as.
And that was a little confusing.
Yes, sir.
Member Jordan, if you can move that forward?
I will do that.
I look forward to seeing that.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. That's all I have. Oh, Happy New Year to everybody.
And just for clarification, the mayor is the one who does proclamations?
And I think that might have been a little bit more of the confusion because a proclamation came forward from the public and the mayor is the one who produces those.
Right.
I'm going to just look at it as a bit of a misunderstanding or however that played out. I will say it again, I look forward to seeing it.
Okay, thank you.
You know, being that I'm part of this team, would somebody clue me in?
Yes, sir, you have your button pushed, we can do that. Go ahead.
A member of the public came, a young kid, actually, Mickey McCallion came forward with a proclamation and basically was asking for the mayor to have a proclamation that basically say, we're going to work toward civil obedience, getting along together. And that was it. But it came, when the mayor, the past mayor saw it, it was already in the format of a proclamation. So he was saying, well, I haven't even agreed to this thing yet, you know, why do we have this proclamation? And it confused me too, because I didn't know, it was like, normally you just get the wording. And then when he's approved it, we have a secretary put in the proclamation form. And that wasn't done. It just came to him in the proclamation form, so.
And for further clarification, the council does not have to approve mayor's proclamations.
Right.
Mayor can do proclamations on.
And like I said, you know what I'm saying. Okay, Vice Mayor.
So my question is, Mr. Broom, do you want me to work on it or do you want to work on it?
I guess I was a little confused because, like I said, the mayor does proclamations.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I will work on it.
Wanted me to look at it, I'd be glad to look at it with you.
And seriously, I think I'm understanding what they're saying to me now. City manager, can you remind me, we have a meeting together on Thursday. If you could remind me, if I need to come back here, we'll do that. Thank you, city attorney.
I'll just send you a copy, you may still have it, but I'll send you a copy.
I see what they're saying to me now.
I'm certain Virginia has it.
Yeah, she probably has it.
So.
They are mayor proclamations, and I'm going to speak about one here in a second. So I'm going to move forward and we're going to move out.
Getting tired.
I know you are, so I'm going to go fast. But I'm not going to do this every week, but I kind of want you guys to know that, how I. But I'm not gonna do this every week, but I kind of want you guys to know that, how I, I don't wanna say how I roll, but I'll say how I roll. In the last month, I was fortunate to speak at the Ontario Youth Football Banquet. I thought that was important and it was pretty exciting. I was part of the, I think you may have been as well, the parish points of light video. Anyway, well, that's okay, I'm just saying that you should have been there. But anyway, I, I just think that's important because I got to be included. I think the more visual we can do sometimes, and it's just kind of how I think it is, as I said earlier, I've always told people, there's a lot of things you can be, but the most important thing you can be as a leader is be there. And so that's what I'm trying to do. So as a part of that, proclamation, the pastor of my church, I mean, you may know Pastor Bill Corsten, he retired, and he, I'm not gonna go into great detail, but he has some, he's fighting some health issues. And so in the Methodist church, you're fortunate if you're at a place for five years or so, he was there 10 and a half. And he fought his last three years, a tough health situation, and he didn't miss anything. So I did a proclamation for him in his last day. And I gotta tell you, nothing made me happier than seeing him hold that and cry with emotion. So that kind of made it well worth it. I'm reading these, and I have cataract surgery on Monday. The reason I say that is, the later this is gone, the harder it is to read. Oh, we, we speak, city manager and I will speak at the Retired Educators Luncheon on Thursday. And we do the Astronaut Memorial on the 30th of January. So with that said, I just kind of want it known that I'm, pretty much I haven't said no to anything. That'll come, though. But I'm, I'm really trying to get out there and, and with every place I speak, just so you know, it's not, you know, real corny, I'll do it again on Thursday, you know, we are Titusville. And I say that because, and I'm gonna say to them, if we aren't proud to be in Titusville, no one else is gonna be proud of Titusville. So we project the image, and how we talk about ourselves is how we are. So I'm gonna continue to do that, and I think that we, you know, got a good start. The homeless, I think I said, I spoke at the homeless ceremony, that was very touching as well. Sheriff Ivy was there and spoke as well. So with that, Member Robinson?
Yes, and I want to add on to that.
Well, Member Robinson spoke at that, too.
Yes, I spoke there and I was at also the reefs, the veteran reefs around the, the country. I was there.
Yeah, reefs around the country.
Yeah, I was there and I spoke at Titusville Honor Society Indoctrination, Titusville High. I was a keynote speaker there.
Very good. I spoke at that one, that was one of my more nerve wracking ones, to be honest with you. It was, it was very something, that's great. City manager?
Yes, sir, and council, the Titusville Talking Points for January was published and hard copies are available. We've also provided you hard copies. The video, the associated video should be done soon. So I, okay. I knew if I said that, he would pop out there. So again, feel free, when you public speak, to use that video as a very good intro to whatever you're speaking on or whatever. Second, we received word from our I S O, as you recall, our Insurance Services Office Inspection. On a scale of, by numbering one being best and 10 being worst, our evaluation was two, which put us in the up, correction, it was, it was a three, which put us in a very elite category. They reviewed some of our inter-local agreements with Bivard County, which Chief Woodward was instrumental in bringing together. One of them being closest goes first, instead of, you know, it's the Titusville city limits, Titusville got to respond. So that improved our I S O rating to a two, which now puts us in the top 4% nationwide.
Wow.
Of all, of all fire departments.
Congratulations.
So we're very proud of that. We're very proud that we were able to improve from a four about eight years ago to a two now. And Chief wanted to pass along to you that we're not ending at two, we're gonna go to four or one. So we're gonna continue to improve on things. He has a couple items that are going to be addressed that could possibly, during our next evaluation, bring us up to a one. So very proud of our, our fire department and everything that they do. And this helps our citizens with the, the pricing of their homeowner's insurance. So very proud of that. A second is the city was awarded the Government Financial Officers Association Annual Award for our CAFER. This is the 37th consecutive award. I noticed today in the paper that Melbourne decided that, I'm not making fun of Melbourne, but they're, they're proud of this. This is a great achievement. But this is our 37th consecutive award.
Wow.
So that's, that's an amazing feat and something, again, to be very proud of with our financial reporting. Last, the student advisory council, we came before council before the end of the year. The, during the COVID crisis, the schools have decided to not allow extracurricular activities off their campuses, which was prohibiting our student advisory council from meeting here in City Hall. They've since reassessed that and said if, as long as we're following social guidelines for COVID, that they would allow that board to start up again. So Jolynn Nelson's their staff representative, so we wanted to pass along to you that that's now underway again.
You got the Jolynn part right.
I mean, I'm sorry, Jolynn Dunhoff. I do that sometimes on the email, too. Sometimes Jolynn gets your reports. Next is, we have a couple special meetings coming up. The C B D G first meeting, which is the presentation to council of those requesting C B G grants, is the 18th of February at 5:30. And then we begin the budget process for the F Y Strategic Planning Community Conversation. And it will be in a different format, it'll still be facilitated by, by Kristen. And, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to do tables and certain things because of COVID. I, I will not be at that meeting, so Tom will be in my stead for that particular meeting. But it will be this facilitated meeting for that. And then the second strategic workshop is scheduled for the 11th of March, and that's following on to get your strategic goals and objectives underway so staff can begin the budget process. At your next, but, at your next city council meeting, I've told you, because of the uncertainty of state revenues, that we were going to give you a review of where we were at, at, because we are complete with the first, first quarter ended at the end of December. We don't have all the state data yet, so what I'm going to provide you at your next meeting is the information we have and comparing it to the previous budget year so you can see, you know, where we're at. So I, I just looked at it briefly before this meeting, and I, I think what will be helpful for you is to provide the like months from the budget that was not COVID affected, the current, the current data that we have on state revenues, and then your budget, our budget that we put together based on the proposed projected state revenues. So I think that's the format we're gonna use for you. And the second evaluation that we're doing is we're looking at our ad valorem because that revenue was up 7% this past year. Our property values are still rising, which is good. We've brought some more things on to the tax rolls this year. So our initial first quarter look at ad valorem is very healthy. So I want to provide that information to you as well. It's not something that we normally do, but this, during this COVID time, I really think we ought to be paying a lot closer to attention to these budget, budget income that we can't control, if that makes sense to you. And then we'll have a better feel for it mid-year when we make those mid-year adjustments. Is there any other, why I brought that up is, is there any other information that you would like us to provide you budget-wise on those sorts of items? With that, that completes my report. And again, thanks for the staff, we have a wonderful staff. And it's a tough phone call to make on Christmas morning to say, you gotta get the vacon truck up to start cleaning up. And had no hesitation whatsoever, had volunteers working through the Christmas holiday. So we have a great team.
City attorney? Anybody else? With that, we are Titusville and we are adjourned.